All right, good evening. I'm gonna call this work session meeting to order, or ask for a roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Kolar.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
All right, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to do the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
I get it.
Any discussion?
I'm requesting that we remove the policies from 901 from first read because we didn't go through the proper steps at Policy Committee to bring those to first read. So I'm requesting we bring those back to Policy Committee, please.
Are you making a motion?
I am, yes, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Dr. Kolar.
So I'm not part of the Policy Committee meeting. Could we get a little bit of background about why they were added to first reading if that was not the will of the Policy Committee?
Did you read the superintendent memo?
I did, but it doesn't really answer the question about why they are appearing for first reading if that was not what the Policy Committee suggested. So I was just like some clarification since I was not at the meeting and not able to watch it.
I'm happy to provide that clarification. And it wasn't as if the Policy Committee actually verbalized, "We're not in favor of doing this." There really was no articulated, "Should these come back to committee or should these go to first reading?" However, I did say at the end of the conversation around school police, "We'll take all the feedback and we'll bring them back to committee next month." And then as we went through the revisions, there were not very many, and had the ad hoc conversation, the policies were pretty well set. And the revisions that were suggested were implemented. So my recommendation in the notes was to move them to first read and get the whole board to weigh in. The board can still move them back to policy if that's its will. So there really wasn't a hard and fast, "Let's do this or that," and that was something that I failed to ask the committee. Should we move, does everybody agree to move these to first read? That did not occur. So it was a bit ambiguous. I did make the statement they would come back, and then going through the notes and the feedback, changed that to a recommendation to bring them forward.
I do have a question or comment, rather. So my concern is that it went, it wasn't voted on the way that the procedures are supposed to occur during policy meeting as to whether or not it go to this first read. And then there was the ad hoc, and I feel like it almost needs to then go back to policy to have the conversations with everyone as to what happened in the ad hoc committee, the conversations that were had, so it can be revisited one more time before it comes here. Again, I'm just concerned that we're going through things rather quickly and we're not taking all of the necessary steps to ensure that everybody's voices are heard.
I just wanna read the note that's in the Policy Committee minutes, at the end of the minutes, "At the conclusion of the meeting," meaning the policy meeting, "Administration indicated returning policy 705-1 to 805-2 back to the committee after incorporating the feedback offered. After review of the suggested revisions to policy 108, 705-1, 705-2, 805-2, and a conversation at the Safety and Operations Ad hoc meeting which was administrative regulations based on April 25th, members of the Administration have met and reviewed all information from these meetings and proposed versions that have been requested for the first read. Administration is now recommending that these four policies move forward to first read by the Board of School Directors in May, which would be next week." So I'm in favor of keeping the agenda as currently presented, and that's how I will vote. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that I don't so much have an issue with the policies as there was a agreement by this board of a procedure set up by board leadership of how we were going to do our committees, our Policy Committee. And so I, it's, my concern is that we are continuing to bypass the procedures that we agreed to. And I was a part of both of these meetings, and there was a lot of rich discussion at both, a lot of rich discussion at the Safety Ad hoc Committee with a lot of questions, particularly around one policy, and it was, "We really need to discuss that more." And I don't feel that I've had the proper amount of time to review the policies to say whether or not I agree with them. And I very much value the multiple voices on Policy Committee to make sure that everything was incorporated, that was discussed. But again, my main concern is that procedures have been set out and we continue to change the procedures however we want to, and I just, I don't think that's fair to our community.
Well, the good news is you have plenty of time because it's next week. Any other discussion?
So, I'm really not appreciating the flippant remarks, but besides that, I do feel that there needs to be time, again, where the information, the rich discussions that happened at ad hoc, not everybody that is part of policy goes to the ad hoc Safety Committee. And I think that there does need to go back now to policy to incorporate all of that information and ensure that all voices have been heard and incorporated before we come and bring it to first read.
Any other discussion? Yes?
So the other thing, I was, I was talking to Ms. Widener about procedures today. My understanding is, too, the board can consider a first read this evening, send the policies back to Policy Committee, and engage in a second reading if it chooses in June. So that's permissible. Administration would be happy to consider further conversation if that's the will of the board, if that would help people to feel more comfortable and make sure that everybody's as informed as they need to be. That's a possibility.
Yes.
So, I think that, because I was at both meetings as well, it's, if, I find it just strange that everybody's, not everybody, but there is a large portion of people that were at the meetings that didn't have the same takeaway that we were ready to move forward with the policies. So I think that that's where my discomfort comes in, and specifically around language that I felt is missing from the policies, and also the language around excessive use of force, which I know you did address in the memo, but again, it just seemed like we ran out of time before we were actually able to, to address some of the things. And one of the things that I had brought up to you, Dr. Russell, at the ad hoc committee, was that the way that the policy meeting ran that week, it was really very passionate with regards to focus not only on this policy, which deserves its own sole focus, as far as I'm concerned. And I expressed it to you at the ad hoc, that I really would appreciate having just a safety policy meeting, just only talking only about that policy meeting. And I was very clear about that conversation, and I felt like we, you agreed with me when we discussed that. And I felt like that's the page that we left it on. So I was surprised to see that it just moved forward, because I felt like we were moving and making progress in the right direction. And I don't think that the diligence was done at policy meeting this, that month, and then the work was also not completed at the ad hoc. So I think that's where my discomfort comes, is that there's, like, I don't, I don't see the benefit of not giving it its due diligence. And I really feel very strongly, as I explained to you, about not having that, these policies with regards to the safety be discussed at policy with any other policies, because I think that we have two very heavy lift topics right now going on in policy. And I felt like I personally was so emotionally invested in the first portion of the policy meeting that by the time we got to the safety conversation, I was already in a, not in a place to really be able to digest and contribute to that portion of the meeting. So, so for that reason, I would request that we have more time to just all sit around and talk about it. And then if we wanna sit around and talk about it line by line here, that's fine, but it should only be, we should only be focusing on that. And because our, our community and our families deserve our focus just on that.
Any other discussion?
I'm happy with the policies. And I was at the Policy Committee, and I thought that the Policy Committee was moving the police policies forward to a first reading. That was what I thought happened. I remember that it wasn't specifically voiced, that the first, so I didn't go back and listen to it. I remember that that was not specifically voiced, but everybody seemed in favor of those, moving those policies forward. And I think that kinda language was used, move the policies forward. And then I seem to remember you saying, too, "Bring them back to committee," but I didn't know if you were going to make some minor additions or some comments that were made, but everything was positive and constructive, and I thought they were moving forward so that we would have them in time for hiring at the end of this year. So I thought it was going to a first read at this meeting, and I didn't think there was anything further needed from the Policy Committee. And I was there.
Yeah.
And there was no pushback happening. And the entire community had an opportunity. And it wasn't, it wasn't contentious at all. It was cooperative and productive, and the police policies were reviewed, and Dean Miller had a chance to be questioned and answer questions. And it was a very nice part of the policy meeting.
Thank you. And I, and I respect the fact that, you know, in the normal process of policies, sometimes there are changes made after suggestions at the meeting, which is the norm, and that's what we're seeing, seeing now. So I'm very appreciative of the work the Administration did, and that the purpose of the safety not was AR-based, not policy-based. And I, I think we've heard ample from our community and given them and respected their, their time and commitment. Any other discussions before we vote? Yeah, Dr. Campley?
So, I don't think anyone's saying that there was contention or that there was anybody being upset. I just think that there is the voice of wanting to delve deeper and making sure that we're really looking and considering everything. And we've gotten several emails from people who were at that policy meeting with concern regarding the fact that it was coming up for a vote tonight, or not a vote, but to be put on the agenda for first read for next week. And I just think we need to consider that those, that there's a lot of people in the community that they really want to be able to trust the process, they wanna be able to feel good about how it's happening. And I think that the first policy meeting was a good show, that we're headed in that direction. But we don't wanna just jump either. We wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and I don't feel that by going straight to a first read before we've had an opportunity to go back is appropriate.
I think when we talk about the community, I like the old business saying, "The market declares itself." This room is not overpowered with people upset about anything.
We've gotten emails, so whether or not there's a million people in our audience or not, there's still voices out there.
Mm-hmm.
So I really find that quite disrespectful to the community at large that may not be able to be sitting here but have reached out and have voiced their concerns.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, oh, go ahead, Mrs. Mares.
So, obviously, I was at policy, and there was, I was surprised at how little conversation there was around the SBO policy. And then at the ad hoc, there was nobody there except for the ad hoc members, well, not nobody, and then I guess two other community members who have a lot of experience and knowledge with school police officers. And so I was surprised at that meeting that there wasn't a big show. So...
Thank you. We have an amendment on the floor to remove 9.01 from our agenda. A vote in favor would remove it, a vote against would not. Oh, ask for a roll call?
Let me say that again, a vote in favor would remove it?
Yes.
A vote not, okay.
Dr. Campley?
So, yes.
Mr. Dorr?
No.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
No.
Mr. Keenan?
No.
Dr. Kolar?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Mares?
No.
Mr. Saylor?
No. Back to the original motion, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as, as presented?
I think you have, you have the motion and a second, but we need a vote.
Yeah.
Discussion, a vote.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion as presented, say aye.
No.
Aye.
I ask for a roll call. A vote in favor is to approve the agenda as presented, a vote against is to end the meeting.
Dr. Campley?
No.
Mr. Dorr?
Yeah.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett? Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Kolar? Ms. White? Mrs. Mares?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
Yes, motion passes. We'll move on to comments from the public. Let me pull up the grid. And no one said, "Yeah," so would anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Rock and roll. First name, last name, where you live.
Mr. Weaver, could you make sure the microphone is on? Thank you.
Yeah, just give one second. There you go.
Okay, Denise Pantacconi, Skippeck. So I was here for last month's meeting, the last meeting we had, and there was this discussion about the review process for the books before they can be added to the library. And the conversation centered around sexually explicit and age-appropriate books. This went on for over an hour, but I didn't, I wasn't clear as to what the resolution was at the end. What wasn't clear is the issue about how books and other materials outside the curriculum are reviewed before being allowed into the classrooms to be presented or read to children. For instance, back in the day, my teacher read Charlotte's Web to us, which is not a controversial book. But given where we're at now, do books or other outside materials brought into the classrooms by the teachers or aides or anyone else have to go through the same review process as the library books? Specifically, I'm referring to books or materials that may cause children to question their biological gender. Such books are, are being read to children at PV. We know this because someone, I don't remember if it was a teacher or a librarian, read an excerpt from a book that she had read to her children at the school board meeting about two months ago. And I was appalled. It makes no sense to any reasonable person why material such as this should be read to grade-school-aged children. Anyone reading this kind of rubbish to vulnerable children should be fired. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? Yes, sir. Just, you have three minutes, just state your first, last name, and what township you're from, sir.
Yeah, Don Pantacconi, Skippeck. I wasn't gonna try, this is the first time here, thanks for hearing me. There was a quote from a famous person, "I heard something, and I was confused, and I walked, and I walked." That was Albert Einstein. I think as school board members, we have to be aware that children are pliable, and they can get into a state of confusion. As a contractor in Skippeck and in this area, I'm hearing this from homeowners, from people within various faiths. Some are Jews, some are Christians, some are Muslims, Hindus. And I'm hearing this, that our children are being taught outside of the school something, and yet they come to school and they're taught something else. As school board members, I think you have a moral and ethical responsibility that no confusion should be put upon children. And I don't think any teacher has a right to proselytize their faith onto children. This whole transgender ideology religion, that I can change my body, I can be my own god, it's a religion. And you need to look at it for what it is, and it should not be here. I can't, we can't vote out the teachers' union. I know what's going on across the country and what's being pushed. But we can vote a certain way for the school board. It's our moral and ethical responsibility that our children are protected across the spectrum, all children, that no children should be confused. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Christian Seibel. I'm a student at PV High School. I'm from Collegeville. I just wanna speak as a student of the district. I've been a student of the district for a long time. And I just wanna say that there seems to be a lot of discussion of students who are gonna be confused by certain books or concepts being introduced to them throughout their educational career. And I don't think you're giving students very much credit. I mean, I've, I've learned a lot about gender identity and sexuality, whether it be from friends, or health class, or books that I've picked up and read. And I'm a straight white male, and I have never been confused about that fact. I know I'm a guy. I read a book about a transgender person. At no point in the novel was I like, "Hey, maybe I'm not a guy." And if somebody does feel that way, that's, that's great. If they're thinking, "Hey, maybe I'm gonna take a deeper look about, at my gender identity," that's probably something that was there before they had, they had the book in their hands. And this book just gave them the words to express that. I've never felt that way, and I didn't feel that way when I picked up the book. But if it gives somebody the vocabulary to understand and express themselves, that's awesome. I also think there's some confusion. Just because a book's in our library doesn't mean it's being read to our students. The individual who read an excerpt from a book about a transgender student that was referenced, referenced by another speaker, at no point did that staff member say that they were reading that to the students. All they said was it was on the shelf, in the event it needed to be checked out. I believe they actually pointed out that it wasn't checked out often, but they knew that the time it was checked out, it was needed. So I think that's just something to keep in mind. It's not like they're coming into my class or my English class and saying, "Hey, let's read about gay people or transgender people." That's, that's not how this whole system operates. And I just wanted to clarify that. As a student, who knows how it does operate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Trina Sadler from Skippeck. As an educator myself, I find it very offensive that individuals think that I spent four to five years of going to school to get a bachelor's degree to teach children. I did not take a course that was called How to Indoctrinate Children, because that's not what we do in our preparation to become educators. So this whole idea that teachers are trying to indoctrinate students is very offensive. It's offensive to an educator, it's offensive to someone who spent another additional two to three years to get a master's degree, then another additional three years to get another master's degree. All the education that these teachers have to get to keep their jobs, all the extra credits they have to get, the hours they have to earn, it's insulting that some of you really think that they wanna indoctrinate children. Teachers wanna give children the skills that they need to be critical thinkers, to process information and come up with their own ideas, perspectives, ideas, perspectives, and just perspectives on different things. No one's trying to indoctrinate your children. We need to develop our children to be able to compete in a global society. Everybody is not Christian, everybody is not heterosexual, everybody's just not. That's just the nature of our world. So we have to prepare our students to be able to interact and collaborate with all types of people, whether they're like them or not, it's irrelevant. When you have a common goal that you have to meet on your job, you have to collaborate with people. You don't have to get along with everybody. But when you have a common goal, you have to work together for that common goal. So I would really appreciate that people stop saying that educators are indoctrinating students. That is not what we do. And if you're insecure in your ability to, to raise your child as a parent, that's a personal thing that you have to deal with. I teach my children certain things morally and ethically. My children know what we believe in my home. So if my children come to school and read something that's contrary to what we believe at home, it's just another perspective that they gain on a particular, a particular area or content or subject or whatever. My children are not gonna come home thinking that they're something that they're not. So we need to step back, really think about this, and reflect on, number one, not disrespecting our educators, and reflecting on your ability to parent your children. Because how you parent your children in your house is your, is the way you parent. The way I parent my child in my house is the way I parent. But you can't force how you parent your child on how I parent my child. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none. 2.01 is a special presentation for the Equity Plan for next week. Student Liaison will do next week, since they're not here. President's Report, I actually do have a President's Report to give. Indulge me for just a minute. I'd like to read a memo that came from Representative Joe Cerisi. I know I've talked about this to the board in the past. Every year, our state pension systems, the Pennsylvania State Employee Retirement System and the State Employer, Employee Retirement System generate billions of dollars to our economy. In 2020, for example, Peasars and SCRs supported about 55,000 jobs and provided $1.2 billion in tax revenue. Yet, despite this profound impact, local taxpayers and school districts are forced to foot the bill for the unfunded liabilities in our state pension system. That is why I, remember, this is Joe Cerisi, that is why I am introducing a bill to save taxpayer money and support investment in the state and local economies by using state surplus funds to reduce these unfunded liabilities. Under my bill, Peasars and SCR will respectively receive $670 million for Peasars and $330 million for SCR for the rainy day fund for the reduction of their unfunded liabilities. Per models, for the last two fiscal years, the cash infusion could reduce the Pennsylvania's tax burden via employer contribution by approximately $2.1 billion, $1.462 billion for Peasars, and $656.4 million for SCRs over the next two decades. During these difficult economic times, we should optimize taxpayer dollars for economic growth by using surplus state funds to pay down personal student, personal systems debt. Please consider joining me in support of stronger local economies by signing this bill to this fiscally prudent proposal. The reason I bring this up is because I had the honor and privilege on Thursday of last week to attend the North Penn YMCA Leadership Summit, and then on Friday, the MCIU Legislative Breakfast. On both instances, there were representatives from Harrisburg at these events that I had the opportunity to talk about this bill that Joe Cerisi has put out. I really appreciate the fact Steve Magliari, Donna Sherrin, Joe Webster, Joe Cerisi himself, Representative, or excuse me, I apologize, Leader Bradford, spending time and talking to me on Thursday and Friday about these, about this core initiative to help pay down our unfunded liability for Peasars, which in a fair and equitable way will assist all school districts in reducing their overall budget, which will enable schools to then fund students at a higher rate. That, that is absolutely crucially important. If Perkioman Valley can save, you know, $600,000 on their Peasar account, that's $600,000 more we have to fund our students, and that should always come first. So I was really excited about that. The North Penn YMCA Leadership Summit talked about the legislative access of homelessness in Montgomery County. It is a real issue, not just in some areas of Montgomery County, but all areas of Montgomery County. So it was great to see school boards and legislatures from the Montgomery County area talk about this really important topic. And the MCIU breakfast, the legislative breakfast, it was great to spend time with other superintendents. Our superintendent and assistant superintendent were there to hear perspective of other school board members, what's happening in other schools, and get legislative updates. Lastly, I'll tell you a story that I told one of the MCIU boards. I, individual- I, individuals that runs MCIU, I ran into a student at one of our high school baseball games. He's a former lower perk little league player, and he was there to watch one of his friends play. MCIU student who graduated through the MCIU last year in the HVAC system, is working for a HVAC company. They're going to be paying for his four years of college while he works at that company. It's a tremendous story, one that happens a lot out of that building of great stories where kids can get not only work skills, but put themselves in positions to be financially successful, and then also to get hired by an HVAC company that's going to pay for their college. It's just a great story and great work done by the MCIU. And that's a representation of all of our local school district communities. With that, that is all I have for my president's report. Dr. Russell, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. So I have a few topics this evening, and a couple of items will be Mr. Shaffer. So Mr. Shaffer, Matt Shaffer is a senior this year, and he is busy and very committed to AP exams, and could not be here this evening because of a commitment tomorrow with an AP exam. So he's passed on a few items that he would like to communicate to the board. I have a couple of recognitions and celebrations, talk a little bit about post-prom, and then graduation. So each, each month, we sort of start with our shared beliefs, and this, this month we'll talk a lot about partnerships and future readiness, getting our students prepared for what comes next, whatever that may be for them. Let me start with Mr. Shaffer. This is Matt and his date, and headed to the prom, which while the weather wasn't so nice, the event seemed to go really well. And then there was a post-prom, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Mr. Shaffer also wanted us to know that the first and only unified track meet is this Thursday. It's our home meet for, for the season, and he wanted to put a plug in for that, as well as how hard students are working to be successful on their AP exams and the Keystone Exam. So there's a lot happening at the end of the year. There's a lot of really fun activities for our students, and there's also a lot of hard work. Right now, our elementary and middle school students are engaged in the PSSAs. APs have started, Keystone's come a little bit later in May. So there's a lot of testing that happens at the end of the year, as well as some of those really enjoyable activities for, for our students. He also wanted me to mention Spike Valley. So last week, Mrs. Evans-Brockett, there have been some other board members that have attended a session at Flux Space, which is a facility in Norristown under the leadership of Mr. Gary Height. He's a teacher here at the high school. And his students generate or present projects that make an effort to better the world. And Matt and his partner presented the creation of the first annual or inaugural charity Spike Ball Tournament. Spike Ball has become a very popular game among young people. So Matt and his partner that presented with him have named this tournament Spike Valley, and it will be May 20th, and he wanted to extend the opportunity for anybody who's interested to come out from 2:30 to 6:30, or to make a donation. And he has plans to donate that money, as you see in the title, charity. So thank you from Mr. Shaffer for these points. I wanted to give a real shout out to the, the individuals that traveled to Harrisburg. Mrs. Smith went along, Mrs. O'Sullivan behind me. Dr. Kloon has led some really intensive work around the Lenape Arboretum Mullenberg Woods, and the project was awarded the Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence. And he took a group of people out there that included Jeremy Johnson of the Delaware Tribe of Indians. You can see him in the picture there in the red jacket. Several of our students, a couple of our parents, and then several of our teachers. On the left there, you see Mrs. Amy Breck, High School Science Department Chair. She teaches here at the high school. Mrs. Kate Zapla, Middle School Science, and Mrs. Danielle Emers at West. And all of them have contributed and really invested a lot of time and energy into what's happening in the Lenape Arboretum Mullenberg Woods. And they got some really nice recognition last week. So kudos to them. They went out to Harrisburg, they had a really nice dinner, they engaged with some state representatives, and it was sponsored by the Pennsylvania Environmental Council that works to protect and restore natural and built environments, similar to the ones that East is working on now. So kudos to them and congratulations. So you see some of the pictures that help you to know what the vision is, what the mission is, and what it is hoped to look like, both behind East and up at West, once that work is done. And that's a longer term plan, but they've done some great work. I wanted to also inform the board that Thursday evening, May 4th, at North Monco Technical Career Center is the Senior Expo, where senior students in the different programs actually present sort of a portfolio and, and/or a resume. They have the opportunity to showcase some of what they've learned, engage with you in conversation. I plan to attend that. And employers are also welcome. So they also put themselves in positions to maybe engage in interviews in a more informal setting, and hopefully a little bit more comfortable for them. But they do some really fantastic work among the programs that are offered there. So if you're available and interested, that's Thursday night out at North Monco. Post-prom, I stopped by post-prom on Saturday, and I really, when it comes to partnerships, this is really an endeavor. They had between, they had about 150 students who attended, and lots of volunteers here, lots of work to try and create a safe space for students. And one of the statistics that was shared with me is that there are more teenagers that die in car accidents between March and May than any other timeframe of the year. So their efforts are truly to create a safe space for our students after the prom, and they do some really neat things. This year's theme was, was around movies, and they had lots of Star Wars themed events and movies, and comfortable places for the students to be, lots of food to eat, a gambling, or I'm sorry, a casino upstairs in the cafeteria, so some really neat things. They do a lot of work. And this year, I think they were struggling to get the number of volunteers that they would have liked, so it fell a lot to a few people, as sometimes it does. However, all of these individuals in our community contribute in some way. Mrs. Stone shared this list with me, and I really just want to commend them. They, they are real partners in the interest of our students, and it's very much appreciated. So that was Saturday from 11 to 5. And we have graduation coming up. So I recognize our next, our June board meeting, the work session is the 5th. That's pretty close to graduation, which is the 9th. So I'm just giving you the heads up this year. I, I would imagine that many of you are planning to attend. Some of you around the table actually have a senior that's graduating, and that's very exciting. But no, for our community, those of you that are here, that will happen rain or shine, June 9th. And that can be a tough call for Dr. Moss, but the idea is that we hold it. If not in the stadium, it will be in the competition gym. Ticket numbers change, but each year, it is really a wonderful celebration of our students. So we look forward to that again this year. It's coming quickly. Thank you, Mr. Saylor.
Thank you very much.
I have no report. Do you have a report?
Any board and district committee report discussions? Seeing none. Section 3 of the consent agenda, the following items will be added to the consent agenda for approval. In front of you, and for that, we will move on to Mr. Keenan, Education.
All right, we have Education Committee of the whole.
Good evening, everyone. We have quite a bit to share with you this evening, as it is really, you will see the result of the work of many of our teachers, as well as Mrs. O'Sullivan, Mrs. Folks, who are in the back here, our curriculum supervisors, as we are bringing forth to you, I believe, over 20 curriculum guides tonight, and then more to you in June as well. I'm going to go through them pretty quickly, though, because I know you need an opportunity to look over them. They do sit for 30 days, so you have that opportunity throughout the next month to review them and ask questions. I'm just going to give you some highlights, as well as some resources, and then we'll wrap up with some staffing updates. So just a reminder, the difference between curriculum and resources curriculum is the what we teach. So the guide really is aligned to our standards and explains to you the content that's going to be taught, and the skills that we hope our students will develop. And then the resources are something that helps our teachers to implement that curriculum. And of course, we believe that certainly the most impactful thing in our classrooms is the teacher and the instruction that they are providing. It's not all reliant upon the curriculum, sorry, the resources that they may have in hand, those help them to do that. So just to give you an idea, maybe you've looked at them already, we have been using this curriculum template for, I think, maybe two to three years. It is based upon understanding by design, or in layman's terms, backward design, kind of starting at the end, what are the outcomes we hope to accomplish, and then working our way back. The board approves what is considered Stage 1 of the curriculum documents, which is again the what is taught. And again, they will be on display for 30 days. They are posted in board docs for any of our public that would like to view them as well, and certainly pose questions. This slide just explains to you the components that are in Stage 1, that you can see the things that we think about. Again, those standards and skills, what are the essential questions, and how will students be able to transfer these skills. So we have for you tonight, I said it's actually over 20 curriculum guides. These are the courses, or areas in which these guides are coming. The current guides, let's say, for example, K-5 ELA, you board approved, I believe in 2021, or 2021. Those are on our district website, if for some reason you want to compare, you know, what is the existing board-approved guide, and when was it last approved, to what we are bringing forth to you this evening. So I have just a slide for each one. Again, I'm going to be pretty brief here. I started out with the STEM areas. This is AP Precálulus. This is a new course that you approved as part of program planning. So we have put together a curriculum. Just want to highlight, we are driven by the College Board in terms of AP courses as to what the curriculum is. So this document is going to look slightly different than the others, because we've pretty much taken the units and the content directly out of the AP and added it onto our template. So it will look slightly different, but we've put the scope and sequence into our template. And teachers then have access to the AP classroom or College Board, which they felt really provided them with the level of resource that they needed, in addition to some other things that we have available. We do have 150 students have requested this course for 2324, so it will be a course that runs. We have then rewritten the Algebra 1. Mrs. O'Sullivan has worked with both the teachers in the middle school and the high school to put together a curriculum that is identical, taught in both settings, regardless what grade you happen to be in. Again, you can see the scope and sequence, and she has highlighted some things there on the left in terms of really looking at coherence and focus skills, and developing those mathematical relationships and an understanding of that. In the lower left, you will see on for approval as one of the resources, the board approved the use of Desmos, which is an online software program that we use in Algebra. You previously approved that for High School Algebra 1. And now that we've done a review and really brought the two courses to be identical, regardless of the level that it's taught at, we are requesting the approval to include Middle School Algebra 1 in the use of Desmos. It actually only increases the annual cost by $600 to add the extra students that are in the middle school level. And on the, the right over there, you may be saying, well, why aren't you bringing forth a core resource for Algebra 1, which is typically what we do at the time of a new course revision or new curriculum guides? We are investigating something that Mrs. O'Sullivan is really excited about and has brought to us, that many other districts have moved in the direction of, called Integrated Math. That's a little bit foreign, not a term we are used to, but it basically takes your Algebra 1, your Algebra 2, and your geometry, and kind of integrates them together into new courses where you are not teaching skills in isolation. That's something that we are investigating, and so we felt at this time, we wanted to spend next year looking into that, and seeing if that's a direction we want to move in before we would recommend resources. Because resources are designed either to be your traditional Algebra 1, Algebra 2 geometry, or to be this integrated approach. And the teachers felt very comfortable with using Desmos and the other resources that they have. So we hope to present to maybe the board in June, a little bit more about what integrated math is, to help in understanding. We know it would be a bit of a change, and we're still learning ourselves. So more to come on that. Then Math 6, we have been working, under Mrs. O'Sullivan, she's been working with teachers to write the Math 6, the Math 7, and the Math 8 curriculums. We still have some fine tuning on Math 7 and Math 8. They will come to you in June for a first look, but tonight we do have Math 6 available for you. And again, you can see the scope and sequence that is there. And she's been doing a lot of work, along with Mrs. Matei, one of our instructional coaches, with our middle school math teachers this year. We've spent a lot of time looking at resources as a core resource for a middle school math program. The supervisors and instructional coach narrowed down some of those resources. We had teachers look at them. We have landed on iReady that we are presenting to you this evening as a core resource. Core resources in areas like math, ELA, science, and social studies, they have pretty hefty price tags. If you recall, when we purchased Into Reading a couple of years ago, which was K-5, we spent almost a half a million dollars on that. This is a six-year subscription. It includes both digital and print for about $170,000 for the three grades that are there. And then you can see some additional costs for professional development. But you can see on the left, she's given you some information about the resource. There's lots of information linked in board docs about the recommendation, as well as the criteria that we use to select the resource, which you'll see for any that we are presenting to you tonight. And Ed Reports is a resource that educators can go to, that where they vet the resources, they look at the research, and they rate them. And it's greenlit, as we call it, from Ed Reports in each of the areas, which is something that when we brought Into Reading forth to you was also very important to us. I, I will be completely honest with you in that this is a step in, in a direction for our math teachers. It does bring a bit of a level of uncomfort for some of them, but we are excited to be moving forward in this direction with an updated resource for our staff that is really moving towards more of that mathematical thinking. Then we have Health 1 and Health 2. These are high school courses, and you can see the scope and sequence of both are on the screen there. We are still looking at resources for health. We hope to be able to bring that to you in June. We're, we're waiting to talk to the vendor one more time before we bring that forward. These curriculums are very much aligned to the Pennsylvania state standards, which unfortunately have not been rewritten since 2002. So we did utilize those, but they also looked at some of the national standards, and then what types of resources are, are available. Then we have three new courses in music that Mrs. Folks and her department have been working on. The first that you approved in December was music composition, and the teachers have written this particular course here. Unfortunately, there are four students that have requested this, so I'm not sure that it will be a course that will run in the 2324 school year. However, we do recognize even when we presented the course, that given the level of expertise needed of students for them to have developed prior to taking this class, it would be small number of students. So if staffing permits a space in the schedule to do that for a small number of students, we would. If it doesn't, we may not be able to run it. So Ms., Dr. Moss will make those decisions. Ms. White.
For this class, to your point about the expertise that they would need to bring into this particular class, is there a way to perhaps foundationally create, like a, like a lead-up class, like as a rider to this, to allow for this to actually have a more robust pool of students that would be able to take it?
Maybe over time that will happen. I think right now, it's because of the, the requirement that they have taken AP Music Theory before, because it's really composing music in this particular class. So there is a pathway to get to it. It's just that the students have to really be at a higher level.
Okay, it's, okay. I was unsure, because I, obviously there, I know that there are music theory classes that would be prerequisites for this, but I didn't know at what level. So it's AP that then would, you need to take that to.
Be the prereq for this, right?
Understood. Thank you.
To jump in a little bit, what we found, my daughter is hoping to take this when she gets to her senior year, is a lot of students who try to take it in their junior year, kind of had it got pushed off because there was too many, so then they had to take it in their senior year, which at that point, then, there's no opportunity, there's, you're done. So I think it's going to be important for this school to try and make the room for any junior that wants to take music, or AP Music Theory, to have that opportunity during their junior year, so that they then have the opportunity to take music composition. Or we're going to continue to see this situation where there's kids who, you know, would have taken it, but if they're not taking AP Music Theory until their senior year, it kind of, it kind of blocks it.
Yeah, I guess that was my thinking, because it's such a hyper-specialized type of class. I would never have been able to progress to AP Music Theory personally. They, I just limped through regular music theory. But the fact of the matter is, I think, if there would be, like, I guess that's where I was getting at, is if there would be a way to allow for that, even if they ran some sort of like, I don't know, could we do something like that in like a lift situation, that there could be a music, like a theory class over the summer to kind of prep kids that would allow them, until there's a, a pipeline created.
We can certainly work with the teachers to see how might we make the class maybe more accessible for students to get to that point. I can tell you, from being involved in the high school schedule development this year, Dr. Moss and the team put a lot of thought into how do they get students their first choice. So she may very well come to us later in the year or two. You know, the board is normally made aware of courses that are running under 10 students. This may end up on the list. Right now, from our most recent conversations, I'm thinking that it wouldn't, but that could change as she finishes the schedule. We can have those conversations. The next one in the music department is the The next one in the music department is the Piano Lab. This is an exciting new requirement as there's no piano experience required to take this class. We do have 34 students that have requested it. We are limited by the size of the class, given the pianos and the space in the lab, so we may be able to run two sections or so of this, again, dependent on how the schedule comes together. And then we have Select Choir, which was again, another new course that you approved. We do have 16 students who have signed up for this, so we're anticipating that this will run as well. And then moving into some of the core courses, Mrs. Folks and her team have been working on Grade Nine and Ten English Language Arts and rewriting those curriculums. You will see the scope and sequence for each on here and the units that they've identified. We've also included new in these curriculum guides are in appendix for honors courses so that you can clearly see, you know, whether you're in honors or you are in the core-level course, the content is pretty much the same, but how do we differentiate or what does that look like differently for honors? So we're calling that out in the documents this year as well. And you can see on the right, some of the things that she is indicating are emphasized in these particular guides this time. You will notice that there are three guaranteed writing experiences included and that that has been called out, some book club experiences, independent reading, and there's also grammar scope and sequence. I have to say that the ELA documents and as well as the STEM documents are really, if you compare us to other districts, I challenge you to put us up against other districts for what has been included in them. They've done an amazing job putting everything together. And teachers are really pleased that these are, you know, they're excited about curriculum documents, which, you know, sometimes only teachers can get excited about, but to see them excited to actually have a usable document is really great. One other thing I do want to call out is that as we wrote these curriculums, the conversations amongst teachers about the books that might be whole group novels that students would read in these particular courses was carefully discussed. They determined those list of books, you'll notice them in some appendix at the back of Grades Nine and Ten. And we also, in an effort to be transparent, have drafted letters that will be part of the curriculum guides and that either the district or teachers will send out at the beginning of the course so that you can know, oh, my student's going to be reading To Kill a Mockingbird this year. That way you can have conversations with your child if you would like to, or have a conversation with the teacher. But again, kind of listing those novels that will be whole-read novels. And then as we looked at resources, we still have anthologies in our high school ELA classrooms. And an anthology is really a collection of different texts. They don't really get too outdated. It's not like updated technology that's constantly changing. So we feel that that area is covered, but there are two additional areas actually for Ninth through 12th grade ELA that we are bringing forth as potential resources. MemBeam is a vocabulary software that allows students, pretty much a diagnostic that helps to determine their just-right kind of level for vocabulary use and then challenges them that a teacher can use in the classroom and can use the information to help in terms of what skills that they may be working on with students to develop that rich vocabulary. Accelerated Reader is then an opportunity for when students are doing independent reading, which is again, part of the curriculum. How might they, we check their understanding. A teacher can't possibly read every book that a student in their classroom may have selected for independent reading, but this allows them to do comprehension checks. It allows the teacher to use that data from, you know, how are they comprehending to again, drive instruction in the classroom. We are recommending one year of Accelerated Reader really to get an idea of how we may be able to use that and what it'll look like in the classroom, and then a three-year subscription for MemBeam. And that's for all students in Grades Nine through 12, so about 1,700 students in the high school for those classes that are there. K-5 English Language Arts then, this was recently approved in 2021, and you may remember the approval of that Into Reading resource. But the teams have then, once Stage One is approved, we really move into some additional Stage Two, Stage Three, like what does it actually look like in the classroom? And as those conversations started, they really wanted to make some revisions to Stage One, and that's why you're seeing them come back to you. You will see the scope and sequence and pacing has been adjusted slightly. They have included novel study units, and again, what are those novels going to be so that everybody's aware of those titles? And we've included guaranteed writing experiences again, as well as grammar scope and sequence. So really bringing a lot of consistency to, if you're in third grade in one building or classroom, it's the same expectations as in another. And this is just an example of what the adjusted pacing may look like. You'll notice in the first year, we attempted to accomplish every single module and learned very quickly that taking our time and really going deeper into some of them was more beneficial. So you'll notice that, and then you'll see the grammar as well as the writing is added in that light orange. Then we have Social Studies in Grades One through Five. These documents are from about 2010, the initial ones, as well as some of the resources. So this is quite an update for them. And again, you will notice that there are four strands, I'll call them, in Social Studies, Civics, Economics, Geography, and History that spiral through each of these grade levels. This is an example of First Grade, and First Grade actually selected a different resource than Grades Two to Five. They have selected the Social Studies Weekly, The World Around Me, which is more of a periodical in their hands type resource that you'll see, and you can see the cost associated with that for six years. I think they should say Two through Five, that's my typo, I apologize. This is Grades Two through Five. They selected TCI's Social Studies Alive, which has different particular units, as you can see, I can't read the yellow because it's too small for me, but it aligns to the history, and each of the strands has a different kind of book that may go with it. And we do have samples here if anybody wants to look at them. Many of them are available digitally and in Board Docs. We gave you some links that you can explore as well. And then lastly, for curriculum and resources, there are two resources we are recommending, but we do not have updated curriculum guides to go with them, and that may sound a little odd. They are unique situations that I'll just take a moment to explain. In Seventh Grade ELA, in the past, Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Grade Curriculum Review was staggered. Each grade level was done a different year. There are some benefits to that. We'd like to bring some consistency for some vertical sequence and pacing conversations as well as resource conversations. So where we are at right now is Eighth Grade ELA still has some time on its subscription for its resource. Sixth Grade, the board approved last year to extend its resource, and we are now bringing to you Seventh Grade and asking for an extension. This is a resource we've used for six years. We're asking for a two-year extension of that subscription so that all of these resources in Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth, their subscriptions will end at the same time, and then we would bring forth to you new curriculum guides and new resources if appropriate in each of them. So this is a two-year extension. And then Sixth Grade Social Studies, you've seen, we've just brought to you Grades One through Five, and you may remember last year you had Seventh Grade Geo-Civics, you had Eighth Grade US History, and Ninth Grade. Sixth Grade kind of was stuck in the middle there, and we weren't, didn't have capacity necessarily to review that, nor was it the right timing with its subscription. So we did do a curriculum looking at the resource, and they have opted to update their current resource, which is McGraw-Hill 2017 edition. They've opted for the updated 2023 edition as their resource. So we are suggesting to purchase this resource for next year so that they have a resource and use next year to write their curriculum, which many times it's actually very beneficial to know your resource before you're writing your curriculum. You can just ensure better alignment between the two. Yes?
Just a question. I understand the alignment of the Sixth through Eight for ELA. Is it going to cause any issues from a budgetary standpoint if all of the resources are coming up for renewal at the same time?
So typically, the way we've been moving forward in the past several years is like a K-5 is grouped together, a Six to Eight, and then a Nine to Twelve. So we do chunk them. You are right, it's going to bring probably, you know, a $200,000 purchase at one time versus spreading that out. We believe that we can actually get better pricing when you purchase several grades at a time because they know that they're getting more of a bulk purchase for you. There's pros and cons to both, but for right now, having alignment and having vertical conversations, we believe is needed. So any questions on the curriculums that are set forth? Mrs. O'Sullivan, Mrs. Folks are here. I really appreciate all the time and effort they've spent putting these together, working with teachers, or any of the resources that we're bringing forth. Mr. Dorr?
I was just curious, why the reservation about switching to math?
So math, math resources really have a continuum. So I would say over here is when I was in school many, many years ago, very traditional, you know, guided practice, independent practice, I do, you do, we do. Then there is this way over here, very conceptual that has come out now, which some of us in the room maybe, you know, when our children were going through, like, oh, what's this new math? I can't figure this out, right? Very conceptual. iReady is somewhere in the middle of that continuum, and I think for teachers, it's just taking a shift away from maybe that traditional to something that's slightly different can just be a little scary. We have support for iReady. The rubric clearly showed that iReady was the leader. We have teachers that are very interested in using it. It is going to shift us a little bit in a direction that we as a district believe we should be moving in. White?
So I know we had the math discussion several years ago, and they, we adopted a new program at that point to correct.
This is the first math resource. We have renewed math in focus at the elementary to get us to a point where they will be up next. They're going to start review next year.
Okay. And so I just, I'm curious if maybe you can speak to the concept to Mr., I guess sort of to Mr. Dorr's point about the change of resources and curriculum guides when that happens, when it's reevaluated? Because I was just listening to a podcast last week, and it was talking about, generally it was talking about professional development and how when these new curriculum sources are rolled out, it's, it gets harder and harder each time with seasoned teachers, for example, to get excited about being on board with new initiatives and new curriculum guides because it's like, it just keep, the ball keeps moving to it like a new, the next new thing, rather than working with one. So can you talk a little bit about, I mean, I understand the evolution of, you know, pedagogy and, you know, that type of mindset, like you said, there's, there's a continuum. But can you talk a little bit about how you approach that issue?
And I'll certainly defer to Mrs. O'Sullivan. I'll add and say that I think math education is at a point where we want our students to truly understand the connections and the why. There is certainly a place for your rote memorization, and I know my facts, and what is my math fluency per se, but there's more of an emphasis as well on what are those connections, and it's not just one way of doing something and following, I did it this way, now you do the exact same thing. So helping them to understand the why behind it. Mrs. O'Sullivan can add the mathematical terms to that if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, we really want, we want students to be able to develop schema and to connect what they've been learning from year to year. And we see that students often forget, right? And teachers say, well, they, they've never learned this before. But really, we want them to just develop that conceptual understanding, that procedural fluency, and that application in equal measure. And so there's just a real balance there. So as new research comes out and more research, and we understand how students learn better, that's what we want to reflect in our curriculum documents as well. Certainly, there's a shift, and so we want to support teachers in that shift with professional development, with coaching, and with ongoing support in the classroom.
So I guess it's really striking a balance between moving forward and not changing and changing it too much, right? I mean, that's, I guess my question really comes, it's more of a curiosity as to understanding that, you know, it's also, I would imagine, hard for the students to pick up. I know that we, my daughter was in the beginning of the last math in the elementary school, and her coming home with it was very different from me to receive-
Absolutely.
And look at the information, right? Because I wasn't there when it was, when she was taught, right? So in the room. So that to me was a shift in focus. So I understand that there are developments in the performance, but to me, when we are looking at other things, like especially test data, I always think about, well, the how and why of how the message is delivered and received. So that's why I was asking that question.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm just curious about iReady and general, it's just my curiosity. My familiarity with iReady is more on the remediative end of things, so I'm just curious when you have it as a class-wide curriculum versus the remediative program. Is there that opportunity in it where they can take their tests, be leveled where they are at, and get, like, is that part of this curriculum, or is that two different programs? I'm just-
Very good question, Dr. Camp. Please, they are two different programs. I'll do my best, Mrs. O'Sullivan. They are, so this is the core resource or classroom mathematics. There is a piece that is the diagnostic, which would be, I'll say similar, we purchased Star Math, we've got our diagnostic, or like map that we used to use, where it's all built-in, and they can take the diagnostic, and then it can do some adjusting and give information back to the teacher. Some schools use that, it's their, you know, personalized pathway. We are recommending the core resource. Now, they, of course, they want to give us access to that, that learning pathway free the first year. It does come with quite a price tag, so we're very much weighing, might that be something for the future or not, given that we already have Star in place and we're getting really good data back from that? Okay. She gave me the head shake, I did okay. Anything else on curriculum or resources, Mrs. Mares?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm wondering, do we look at other high-performing districts and look and see what they also might be using, and are they having, if they're doing really well, are they having success? Is that something that we have looked at, or are we just?
Absolutely. So both Mrs. Folks and Mrs. O'Sullivan have counterparts in other districts, and part of their process is they do reach out and they have conversations with them. I know Methacton, I believe, just approved that they are moving forward with iReady as well, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, North Penn uses iReady, or they use the learning platform?
They use the customized pathway.
Okay. But yes, they do look at what other districts are using, how are their scores? They converse with their counterparts to say, how was even the PD that you got? How was working with the company? Because sometimes that's important as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then I have a couple of questions about MemBeam and the AR. So I'm just trying to understand, I'm hearing you say that MemBeam is, it's for vocab, it's Grades Nine through 12. I'm just wondering how often the students are going to be utilizing it, or how often the teachers are going to be utilizing the program? Do we really see the benefit where you can take your phone and type in, you know? I'm just wondering, that piece, and then also for the AR, looking at what they're looking at, reading levels, what classes would actually be utilizing the AR program?
So I'm going to start with AR. So Accelerated Reader, all classes would be able to use that. The, so for example, if I'm a student in Ninth Grade ELA and for independent reading, I choose a book that maybe I got at Barnes and Noble, or here at the library or something my parents got for me, I'm going to pick that, that's a just-right book for me, based upon my interest level. I may be thinking about my reading ability, maybe not, and I'm going to read that book. This is going to allow the teacher to understand, did I comprehend that book? Without the teacher maybe having knowledge of what the book is, because there'll be like comprehension checks. It will also then give information back to the teacher on, well, you know, maybe this student is not understanding the development of plot or character, and that those are things then that the teacher can then use in developing their instruction. MemBeam is more of the personalized kind of vocabulary where students will take kind of a diagnostic to understand where their level is at. I believe Mrs. Folks told me that MemBeam recommends 40 to 45 minutes per week that students might be using that. Certainly, we don't want to give up a 45-minute period for this. There may be, this may be something that is a, hey, homework assignment tonight is to do one assignment on this. It might be something that we'd love to see our secondary teachers beginning to use stations or centers, as you see in an elementary classroom, where I'm conferencing with students maybe about their independent reading and what I saw on Accelerated Reader with a small group here, and maybe there's another group over here that is going to be, when you're at that station, you're using that. So we're thinking about different instructional practices as well. Mrs. Folks, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Everything you said was accurate in terms of the time. It is 45 minutes. I'll just add that because we do have Star Reading and working with our MTSS facilitator here, one of the things that we noticed from our Star Reading results in Ninth through 12th grade when it came to ELA was vocabulary. When we were also talking and having conversations here about the de-leveling in Social Studies and ELA, that also came up, background knowledge and vocabulary. So MemBeam really is being responsive to that data that we're seeing. We know that the static vocabulary books that we currently have, those Saddleier vocabulary books that some of you might have even learned vocabulary words with, they're not working. Clearly, our data is telling us that it's not working, so we're really excited by MemBeam. And that is being used in some nearby school districts that I have reached out to, Boyer Town High School, Colonial School District. So there are, there are several districts around us that we can learn from in terms of some of the instructional practices that Mrs. Smith mentioned, in terms of how we can best implement the usage of this particular tool. But it's really about word consciousness. So it's not about memorizing vocabulary words, it's about at that just-right level, students learning vocabulary.
I just wanted to add, so with MemBeam, with what Mrs. O'Sullivan was talking about, these math processes, Mrs. Mares, a lot of it comes down to, the entire building needs to do a better job making sure the students know of all the things that are accessible through their technology curriculum. So I had the opportunity this year to, was it, go, what was it, you know, when I was in your math class, you go watch your son for the day for like 45 minutes, and you're in the class. and you're, you're in the class. I saw his French class, I saw his math class, and I said, well, do you do this at home? No, I don't do it at home. Can you do it at home? Yeah, I can do it. Why aren't you doing it at home? The tech, the tools are there for the students to do, right? And the teachers know about it, it's just, you know, when I went to school, you went home, you had your assignment in your folder, you did your assignment, wherever your worksheet was, you did your study habits in your book, you highlighted it, the teacher checked the next day. There are all these tools that are available through the technologies that we have through the Google Classrooms. We just have to keep pushing it, pushing it, pushing it in students' heads, especially the high school students, it's their responsibility, and keep pushing and pushing. There are all these options that are available in the Google Classroom through the technologies that we purchase for the students.
And I'll just add that I think what's exciting is that our teachers have really grabbed on to the data in Star. I mean, that, that was something that was foreign to some of them, you know, that I can look and I can see their reading level and how am I going to use that? We've made leaps and bounds in a year. I mean, we still have work to do, how to use those, those better to drive our instruction, but having tools like this that directly connect to that, you know, to make those decisions in the classroom is really exciting to see them very interested in being able to differentiate and having individual student data to make those decisions. Mr. Keenan?
I'm not sure if this is correct at all, I just want to ask, does iReady allow students to play games as a reward?
I'll defer.
In some of the lessons?
They may on the personalized pathway, but that is not part of the core resource. So personalized pathway and the core resource are two different platforms. On the personalized pathway, there are opportunities, I believe, for students to play games as part of the math fluency work at their personalized level.
But that is not what we are recommending for purchase. We're recommending the core resource.
And, and as a reward is what I was saying, is that correct? Was that correct, though, that iReady does have some of that in the personalized?
I, I believe so, yes.
I was just checking.
Anything else from the board? Does the public have any comment on curriculum or resources? I know it's riveting. All right. So I will move on to our last topic, is just a quick staffing update. There are not many changes this month except one that I want to highlight. Elementary, we are still paying close attention to, waiting to see how these kindergarten numbers are going to play out. So you can see the kindergarten numbers are as of April 29th, they are still trending lower than we are used to, particularly in some of the schools. So we're keeping a close eye on that. We know that there are some other areas in the elementary that are maybe slightly higher. We've had conversations about those, we're waiting to just see how that all comes together. And then middle school projections look very similar to what they have. And I actually didn't include high school this year because it really doesn't inform us very much the way that we look at just by grade level, it's more about course requests. This slide you have seen before as well, the only updated piece is in the blue there in the middle, this was in the memo to the school board. Each year, we look at course requests and we look at staffing through that. Again, I've been more involved in that this year and have appreciated learning from Dr. Moss. Our course requests in our Spanish courses are down. We do have a halftime position within the Spanish department that we do not need to be able to staff all of the course requests that we have. And that's still keeping our Spanish teachers at teaching five classes. We haven't had to increase anybody to, to the six. That we are recommending, we, well, we plan to be shifting that point five into the art department because we have more requests in the art department that we can't facilitate staffing and they do teach six sections. So it's exciting to see in art, we'll investigate a little bit more maybe why we are seeing that decline in Spanish, but we would be making that particular shift. Any questions on staffing?
You go back first to the elementary numbers. You said you're still looking at numbers, but Evergreen's fourth grade obviously sticks out. Is that, is their, their third grade as large?
Yes, currently, it's their third grade, so it's their fourth, that is one that we're keeping an eye on. And there's a Schwanxville, I think it's the same grade, is it fourth grade, Schwanxville? There's one of, there's two that we're keeping an eye on.
Why wouldn't we be looking at an extra teacher? There are things going really well this year with having that many kids and...
I would say that we aren't at the point to say we want an additional staff member because based upon these numbers, we have two staff members in kindergarten that are not needed. So if we get through another month and realize that they're not needed in kindergarten, we would shift staffing to give positions to those two particular areas. Whereas if we add one now and then we get to the point where we don't need those kindergarten teachers, then, you know, we'd be looking for places to make sure that everybody has a, has a position. So I think we felt like we just wanted one more month to be able to make that decision in June.
Okay. And then the middle school numbers. Can you help me to understand the West numbers? Why there's eight staff for 163 students in eighth grade when there's only seven staff for 175 students in sixth grade?
Yeah. This is a PDE issue that we wish could be fixed as well. When you are K to sixth grade, you're operating under an elementary teaching certificate which allows you to teach multiple subjects. So you can, in sixth grade, you could be, seven drives out a three-person team, which means that we have to share subjects. So I might teach math, three sections of math and social studies, you might have three sections of ELA and one social studies, and somebody else has the science and the social. We can do that because we're elementary certified. When you move into seventh and eighth grade, you're required to have a secondary certification. So you can't make a two-person team because you both have to teach two subjects, you can't make a three-person team because you'd still both have to teach three subjects. So you have four core subjects and you need one teacher for each. So you're kind of locked into having to have a, unless you want to consider dismantling teaming and going back to a junior high model, which I'll be honest, we did look at a little bit, but it still doesn't meet, meet our needs and has teachers across multiple grade levels to do that. And we believe in the value of teaming, but it really is a certification issue because you're right, if we were able to do that in eighth grade, we most likely, given the numbers, would have put them down to seven as well.
Okay. We don't have teachers with multiple certifications? Because I know when my son was in seventh and eighth grade, he was on a two-person team.
You're correct. We still have the two-person team in East in eighth grade, so that, that's how you see a 10. So there's a four-person, a four-person, and a two-person. So those two staff members. We, we did look at all of the certifications in seventh and eighth grade and see what any of our combinations could possibly be, and it was very limited to make, make that work. And the, like, the one or two scenarios where maybe it could work would have been major shifts into other levels and not necessarily the best teachers to be in those spots. So it is, it is very difficult. I can say as a middle school principal, I was fortunate to have seventh and eighth grade teachers that were elementary certified but had, like, a secondary math, that I was able to do that in seventh grade one year, but it really comes down to what you have in front of you in terms of your certs.
Okay.
Could you switch it over? So you, you, you moved the person from west to east to reduce the class size from, let's say, 26 and 24 aggregated to 23 aggregated?
Walk me through that a little slower.
So do you have to move them in double form? So for instance, is one equal two? So for instance, if I moved two sections of teachers, so you'd make middle level, middle school west on grade seven and eight, a staff of seven and seven, take those teachers, move them over to have a staff of nine and 10 in seventh and eighth in east to lower their class size at east by percentage, couple percentage points, so it's more equaled to the percentage sizes of the class sizes at west?
So it is...
Or is it doubled up?
It is kind of the one-to-two type thing. You can make a four-person team.
Yep.
In, in sixth grade, you can do anything. In seventh and eighth grade, you can do a four-person team. Or if you have people like East does in that eighth grade, you can have a two-person team because they have multiple certs. But you can't do a three-person team or like a five-person team. So shifting to a nine, so we are like stuck at four, eight, or 10 are really the numbers that we have to, to use.
I just want to go back to the, the elementary comment. I know you weren't at the Education Committee and there were several people that weren't there. I do think it's important to note that Mr. McGill, who's at Evergreen, did advocate and speak strongly about wanting an additional person for fourth grade because he said it has been extremely difficult with the needs of that current third-grade group to meet all of those needs based on the numbers. And he was a strong proponent in that meeting for an additional person. Now, I can't speak to West because there wasn't somebody there that was representing it, or not West, was it Schwanxville? Schwanxville, but he was at that meeting. And so to answer your question, there was some feedback from Evergreen.
And, and the principals in both of the buildings, all of our seven principals do an amazing job of advocating for the needs in their building and put us in a position of, of weighing out where those priorities are. So we've clearly heard about the two elementary areas, we just would like one more month to figure out the kindergarten numbers. We're hoping, you know, that our, we have an influx of kindergarteners and we can see where we land. Anything from the public on staffing? Okay. All right, that ends my section.
Mr. Keenan? All right. So, what do we move the Education Committee, we're on 4.02. We have an approval to purchase curriculum resources. And do we need to go through this or can we move it to consent?
Mr. Keenan, could I add? I'm, I'm very sorry, I forgot to mention, just with the resources, core resources sit for 30 days. The ones that we're bringing forth for approval this month are the supplemental or the, or renewal possibly. So the larger ones are sitting, I apologize.
Okay. So the curriculum resources as listed then, attached to our agenda, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Can we move that to consent? Everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
No objection.
4.03, approval of curriculum guide for education at work. We have a motion to approve curriculum guide for education at work. Any questions on education at work? We have 4.03, sorry, 4.04, we have approval of foreign, foreign exchange students. Motion to approve foreign exchange students, we have three. Any questions? Any information needed on foreign exchange students in the program? Last year, we had none?
I'd have to look back, we had at least two last year, if not three. And I am anticipating maybe one more even after this, and I believe you previously approved one last month.
Yep.
All right. Any objection moving that to consent? Let us know. 4.05, we have approval of virtual instruction agreement for Warren County School District. And that was attached. 4.05, any questions? Any information needed? All right. Move that to consent. Approval of, 4.06, approval of professional development agreement, what is it? Professional learning partnerships for professional development sessions, coaching and consultative services at a cost of $17,190 for 2324 funded, sorry, I just lost it, by Title II. All right. If we can move that to consent, we will move on to 4.07, approval of Montgomery Virtual Program. Motion to approve Montgomery Virtual Program. Agreement with the intermediate unit to provide online alternative educational services through Montgomery Virtual Program. Any questions? Move that to consent. And do we need to do anything for our 4.08, the enrollment report?
Was given.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Mr. Keenan, I think 4.03...
Sorry.
Can we move that to consent? I think that's...
Well, we talked about that, wasn't that what we talked about?
Yeah, just to confirm, there are no questions on 4.02 to 4.07 moving to consent?
Right, except with the notation that we're, the core curriculums are 30 days out, so next month?
Correct. The 4.03 only has the ones that we're asking for this month.
Correct. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Keenan. Dr. Kolar?
Okay, business section, item 5.01, Mr. Weaver, Finance Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Finance Committee of the Whole presentation. We will move quickly through our presentation, perhaps. Always nice when it goes green, there we go. Okay, we'll have a quick capital projects update. Mr. Fabrizio, if you'd like to come up and get ready. We have a couple of quick hitters. We do have the all-sports insurance, the student accident insurance, and then the depositories, which are mandatory functional things that we do every year at this point in time. We'll have a quick general fund projection update, talk about a recommendation for the use of unassigned fund balance for 2324, and then hit upon the, a shortened version of the 2324 general fund budget presentation. So I will remind the board that you also have a longer version of the actual budget in there, so if you want, that's a little bit more in-depth information for you, kind of like we've done in the past. We've kind of, we have a shorter version and we have a longer version that you can look at, at your own pleasure. We also have attached the ESCO update from Mr. Maury, who is our ESCO consultant on both ESCO 4.0 and 5.0. Mr. Fabrizio, anything to add on those projects?
Yeah, ESCO 4.0, we finally made some headway with PICO and the South Generator, so they're allowing us to connect to either meter now, so we'll be looking to schedule that once school is complete, and that should close out ESCO 4.0. 5.0, the middle school west gas line, the contractor was on-site today staging as promised, so we're looking to get that moving forward pretty quickly. The high school auditorium update, electrical is about 80% done, we're waiting on some can lights for the overhang. Franklin flooring is scheduled to be in in about a week, and their process is about six to eight weeks, and then seating will come in and then we'll refinish the stage. LED scoreboard, we finally have our packet into the township. We have to go before their board at a hearing, which is about 30 days out, to get the waiver for the advertising. And then the music rooms, I'm working with Noah Mallett and Wanger Corporation to revamp these rooms. They're looking at a music system, some seated risers, new flooring and paint in both the chorus and strings room.
Okay, so any, any questions from the board members in regards to the, the capital projects and where we stand at this point in time? If not, we'll have Mr. Fabrizio fix the curtain in front of Mrs. Mares now, please. Thank you. That doesn't cost anything. Okay, so moving forward, all-sports insurance, we have done this the past several years, five, six years, of where we get all-sports insurance to cover the multiple listing of the different activities that we have there. This is a slight increase, over the past couple of years, it's remained steady. The, the new price is $10,348, it's about a little bit less than a 3% increase overall. And this program is planned through the MCU joint purchasing program. Any questions on that? Any questions from the public? Okay. Moving forward, student accident insurance. Student accident insurance, again, is another one of those programs that we provide to our parents and to our students. The cost is completely borne by the parents and guardians of our students, the district does not pay for anything, we just arrange for all this process. Last year, we broken, we broke into three plans, a Plan A, Plan AA, and Plan AAA, and we're going to maintain those and move those forward for next year as a recommendation. Any questions from the school board? Again, no, no cost to the district. Any questions from the community? Thank you. Depositories, again, another functionality of what it is that we do on a yearly basis. This is a listing of all of our depositories. By law, we have to get these board-approved. We have no changes from last year, we continue to work well with all of our partners listed on this, provided on this list. Any questions from the school board? Any questions from the community? All right. Thank you. General fund projection update. If you recall, last month, we actually went through a projection, we were at about $9.2 million over the past two and a half weeks since the last time that we met. Mrs. Hurd and I have met on several different occasions, we, we are, we are recognizing a little bit less of an estimated fund balance due to some workings behind the scenes. We're now at about $8.9 million, again, still within our acceptable range. And why is that important? So that's important because we're recommending tonight the use of $1 million of that fund balance to help offset the future tax increase for 2324. This is a common practice that we use, philosophy and strategy. It's been highly successful over the past number of years. A lot of those backup slides are in the longer version, so you can continue to check those out. But we've already approved $1,505,000 in board-approved uses of existing fund balances, and the $1 million makes it $2,505,000, which equals about 1.63% of the budgeted expenditures as of tonight's presentation. Why that's a key indicator for us is in the past several years, we've been about 2%, or a little bit higher of 2%. So we're in better shape this year than we've been in the past couple of years utilizing this unassigned fund balance. Again, that will leave us, that will bring our tax rate, which you will see shortly, down to about a 2.67% tax increase, which is good for us at this particular point in time. It will also leave a relatively healthy unassigned general fund balance of $8 million, which is about 6.4% of current expenditures. Remember, the law caps us at 8%. So the 6.4% is still healthy as we look at the various different things that we utilize that unassigned fund balance for. So that's the recommendation to utilize $1 million of unassigned fund balance. Any questions from the school board? Mr. Dorr?
Are you expecting any more true-ups before we vote on the final budget?
So we have the, the last part of 30 days of transactions, but we will be locked and[1791.11] But we will be locked and ready to go for our final budget approval in June. I don't see any other true-up costs that are blaring at this point in time that we haven't already enacted.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the community? All right. Thank you. So moving forward, I took a leap of faith, and I included the $1 million as a recommended as a reduction in the backend. We have a couple of slides here that just show where some of those changes were that match up with the interactive. First, we doubled the ESBI that comes from the state based upon the confidence level that we have with the state, with the governor and his proposed budget. Remember, we went out at 3%. That was the average. We doubled that. So instead of just a straight $232,000, we are recognizing another $232,000, and you can see that in the interactive as well. Likewise, for the special education subsidy, we've doubled that as well. We've gone from 4% as prepared in April to 8% as well, and that recognizes another $109,000. Both of those still fall below 50% of what the governor's proposed budget says we will receive. So those are about 19 and 20% respectively, and we're at 8 and 6%. So I feel confident with utilizing that and stretching that out. You all know that Amy and I are very conservative, and this is about as far as we can stretch right now, knowing what we know. Hopefully, in the next couple of days and weeks, we'll have, we'll hear from our professional organizations, and they'll let us know exactly what's going on in Harrisburg. No guarantee on that. So that's kind of where we're at, and we're stretched as far as we can conservatively to show those numbers. Yes?
A follow-up, there was no new information you got in the last month that changed that? That was just, you're comfortable going there for now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the comfortab, the one, I will say that the one source of area that I do glean on is our colleagues, business administrators, and where they feel comfortable. And so I feel comfortable going out with that. That's where a lot of my colleagues are at this point in time. Recognizing somewhere between 30 to 50% of what the governor has proposed. That's a good question. All right, so total revenues tonight, $121,668.33 with the breakdown, and the red shows what we've changed from last presentation. Quickly moving to expenditures, the total package for expenditures, $125,766.782. And again, the red shows the changes that we've shown. So we've adjusted the $1.4 million that we had in there for the security, and now we've broken it out now that we know that we, what we've approved. We have seven SPOs, six SSOs. And now those monies at that 1.4, we've now recognized. The total package gross was 1.469 million. Remember, there's an offsetting revenue stream of $145,000. That brings us to that $1.3 million figure net that we talked about. Total positions, 2.0 special education positions, 1.0 psychologist, which is covered by a grant, which we show on the revenue side as well. And the job coach that has been in since day one, since we've begun the process for this presentation. We had one final adjustment for the health insurance, the work with Mr. Moran at the Buxmont. We were at 1%. The actual came in at 1.2%. So we added another $20,000 on the expenditure side. And again, we removed the replacement equipment that we had originally shown at $55,000 because we moved forward and actually purchased the pieces of equipment that we needed to purchase through operations in April. So we can now remove that from the presentation for May. When you look at the interactive and you break it all down, all of those items kind of come together on the left-hand side. That's our actual detailed transaction as we've shown it. And the upper right-hand corner is the recommended use of $1 million of fund balance. And that brings us down to a 2.67% tax increase for 2324. I will note, several months ago, when we started talking about where we all felt comfortable with, I predicted we would be somewhere between a 2.7 and a 3.1. So we are in better shape than what I predicted, which is great. And again, we'll continue to look at that process moving forward over the next 30 days. It would be great if the state would figure it out. We are not, we know how that works. We're not going to bank on any of that being solved, so we're taking care of our business the way that we need to take care of our business. Any questions from the school board? Any questions from the community? Okay. Thank you. And again, there's some steps there of where we're at, a lot of check marks. We still got a little bit of a sprint to get to the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Items 5.02, 3, 4, 5, and 6 were all part of the committee presentation. Any objections to moving all of those to consent? Item 5.07 will be a motion to approve MCIAU intergovernmental agreement for shared student services as presented. Can we move that to consent? 5.08 will be a motion to approve the 2022-23 special education contracts. Can we move that to consent as well? 5.09, motion to approve the ESY contracts for 2023. Can we move that to consent? 5.10 will be a motion to approve interactive panels. 22 clear-touch interactive panels and 25 Dell computers at a cost not to exceed $85,000. Any concern moving that to consent?
I just have a quick question. Are we then, will we have staffed or purchased all the, no?
That's a good question, Mrs. Mayers. Mr. Ganesh and I have been working diligently to get the rest of these done. We have everywhere from grades three through 12 are complete, and we have been, as we have monies available, purchasing in chunks of about 20. So this will get us down to, I believe, 38 more that we will need to be able to finish the K to 2 classrooms. And we are hopeful between the two of us that come July 1, we will be able to find some sources that we can get the rest of those. Almost there.
Can we move that to consent? 5.11 will be a motion to approve the purchase of Chromebooks.
I actually have a question about that.
Okay, go ahead.
Are they getting bigger?
The Chromebooks?
Yeah.
No, the same size.
Okay. Is there a way to figure out to look at in the future to get bigger Chromebooks? It's really hard for a lot of students because the Chromebooks are very tiny when they have multiple things up on their screen. It's, you know, we've gone all technology-based away from, you know, paper, a book, a book that you're writing in. Sometimes for some students, the limited space becomes an issue. Or if there are ways to show students how to in their home, connect to their desktop monitor, have dual monitoring, just ways to help improve the site aspect for the student. We're having a little private conversation. Oh, I was saying that I was questioning the size, I was, a little private conversation, questioning the size of the monitors. They're not very large, and a lot of students functionally have issues, especially if they don't know that they can connect to their home monitor, to have the dual monitor when they have multiple apps running. They might have their Google Classroom up, they might have their text pad up where they're writing something or doing a math item on their, it's just hard functionally for the size of the computer. That's a lot of the struggles that parents have been talking about.
So we can develop some learning videos that can show the students how to connect with an external monitor. These Chromebooks are certainly capable of doing that. As far as getting a larger-sized Chromebook, we piloted some of the large Chromebooks in the past and kind of zeroed in on these ones. These are the best fit. We can certainly look at larger-sized Chromebooks, but in the meantime, we can definitely create some content that'll show the students how to connect to the external monitors.
Great.
Can we move 5.11 to consent? 5.12 and 5.13 are placeholders for the next meeting. 5.14 is a report of grants and donations. We received $2,000 for Evergreen Elementary from the National Energy Education Development Project. And that concludes Section 5.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kolar. Payment of bills, Ms. Evans-Brockett.
Payment of bills will be covered next week.
Thank you very much. Professional personnel, Mr. Fountain.
Item 7.01, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 are all already on consent. Item 7.07 is a motion to approve a new position. Now, it wasn't?
No.
Oops.
Try that again.
We'll try this again. Item 7.01, 7.02, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are all on consent already. 7.07 is a motion to create a new position, which would be the transition coordinator. Any questions regarding that, or can we move that to consent? We'll move that to consent. Item 7.08 is a placeholder, so that concludes my section.
Thank you very much. Support personnel, Ms. White. Microphone is on.
8.01, 2, 3, 4 are all on consent. 8.05 is a placeholder for May 8, and that is the end of the section.
Thank you very much. Governance, Mrs. Mayers.
Thank you. 9.01, first reading on policies. The policies, 108, 705.1, 705.2, 805.2 are all presented for a first reading. Any discussion?
I need some more time to read over these to see what changes were incorporated. But just real quick, I did, we had a lot of discussion at the safety meeting in regards to the SPOs bringing whether or not they could bring their personal firearms on to campus. And I see that you fell on no personally-owned firearms or ammunition shall be brought by any school employee onto school property. Can you provide some back, I mean, because there were a lot of questions both ways. So is there, what's the reasoning we went there? And then are we enforcing that with anyone? I mean, we had a member at our Safety and Operations Committee meeting who said he was carrying at that time. So are we enforcing that, that no one can be on our school property with their personally-owned firearm?
Mr. Miller, you want to come up?
Good evening. With regards to the question concerning carrying outside of what's permitted by the school policy, the only other caveat to that would be that we're complying with whatever legal regulations are in place at that time. So whether it's the Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act, which is federal legislation, or whether it's state law that permits that person to carry under the proper circumstance. Other than that, we could enforce it. That's correct.
And my understanding from what you said at the meeting that night is it's only current law enforcement that have?
So there is a, pretty much across the board for current law enforcement officers that are properly registered and vetted. There is a piece for retired law enforcement officers, but they must go through a process in order to obtain that. So it's not a complete granting of permission just because they've retired in good standing. So they have to file for an exemption. They have to get that approved by their prior employer. Then they have to prove their competency with a weapon, and that's the only weapon that they can use. And then they must get approval with another background check since they've already been released from appointment, that they can do that. So there's several steps to that process which would have to be validated if we came across that circumstance.
So that makes me have a question. So in the example that was given of somebody being here that said they were carrying, what was done to follow up to either make sure they had that information, or if they didn't, to ensure that they wouldn't be on the property carrying again? Was there any follow-up with that individual?
So the follow-up is that that particular individual is registered as is required, has that certification. And that is probably something we can build into our database as well. And I'll have to talk a little more in the future as we progress through this about how we can do that. So if we have parents that are employed in the law enforcement field that, again, that was an example, I think I gave to you a few weeks back, where someone showed up at a sporting event under the same kind of circumstance. There was a question about whether or not they could carry a weapon at that time, and we established that they were, in fact, actively employed in law enforcement in a neighboring jurisdiction and came here to watch their student. So again, that was a permissible circumstance for them to carry. So, you know, rather than go through the process multiple times, if we can establish some kind of a database with that, that would be helpful.
I appreciate you saying that because you had brought up the story of the sporting event too, and it had caused some concern.
Right.
For people there.
Right.
So I think if we had a database. And is there any requirement for people that are legally carrying to let us know that they're carrying?
There is currently not a requirement that I'm aware of. I don't know if Mr. Subers can speak to that, but.
Other side.
Yeah, I want to, I made, just was making notes to myself. I mean, I want to review this regarding compliance with the applicable laws prohibiting possession of weapons on school property. And I will follow up and report back to the board and also to the administration.
Okay. And so maybe this is something that we also need to consider having guidelines around in our policy?
Yeah, we have to be careful that we don't become more restrictive than the laws that we're engaged to follow. And the one that I mentioned in committee was, so the state law that requires carrying on a school grounds being a violation, which says that it's a violation, also ends with the tagline, "or any lawful purpose." So that's kind of pretty broad when you consider just that piece of it and what is a lawful purpose. So we have to be careful where that leads us. And that's specifically called out for weapons on school property. So I know there was a test case in the Northeast Pennsylvania for that that ruled in favor of the defendant, but I don't know how far-reaching that would make it for us. And again, that's something we'll have to discuss.
I will research that and report back.
School property is a large subject. You know, I carry, I don't have it on me because I'm in a building, but if I go pick up my child from school, I, you know, what am I going to pull over before I get there? Put it in the safe in the trunk? Get back in the car? It's, you know.
Yeah, and that's a question about lawful purpose. Where's that fall? If it's a concealed carry permit in your home county, is it a statewide requirement? Where does that fall for us if we have that to debate?
If you could answer how you fell on, because we had a lot of discussion back and forth about that. So I appreciate that this is the answer that you came to, but I know that there were several that thought that that was not the appropriate.
So we had a discussion, and we thought that it would be best to start in the simplest form. So if we bring employees on, they're only going to have those weapons that are belonging to the district. And we're going to have them arrive with them and leave with them and, you know, go over with them and through the hiring process about proper storage and use. I mean, they should be very familiar at this point in their career, but we want to do that as our due diligence and leave it at that. So they're not bringing firearms here, we're not storing someone else's equipment in our building during the school day, those kind of things. We thought it would be cleaner to do it that way. Come and go with what we provide you with, and that's it.
Mr. Saylor's comment about that he travels onto school property with one brings back up what the concern was, was that we can't expect law enforcement to travel from their home to their job without carrying. So are we saying that that is the expectation, or that?
We're going to make that the expectation that if we provide that firearm and you're employed by the district, we expect you to bring it, have it with you, care for it, and leave with it when you're done.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll put down consent. Well, not consent, but sorry. Yeah, good.
9.02, will be a motion to hold a second reading and adopt the policies that are listed below. Are there any questions? Okay. 9.03 and 9.04. Well, 9.03 is approval of board treasurer. Any questions? If not, we'll move that to consent. Move that to consent. 9.04 will be a motion to approve the PSBA membership. If there, are there any questions? And we'll move that to consent. And then 9.05, voting delegates. If you are interested in participating in this PSBA delegate assembly to be held Saturday, November 4, please reach out to Mr. Saylor. We have until the end of August to approve these members. We have until the end of August to approve these members. And that ends my section.
Any comments from the audi, whoops, I'm on, yep. Any comments from the audience? First name, last name, where you live?
Yeah, Don Penacony, Skip Pack. You were talking, Mrs. Smith, about curriculum.
Oh, you had to address everything towards here, sir.
Excuse me?
You got to address everything this way.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I was hearing about curriculum, and one of the things, again, being in this community and hearing things, as well as being a father of six and a grandfather of thirteen, hearing it from my children, is that how like American history is not really being taught the right way. One of the questions that I've asked kids in the community, as well as my own grandkids, about the Vietnam War, I had a family member, I just missed going, but I had family members that died in that war, so I'm kind of concerned about that. And I have seen how America's exceptionalism is not so exceptional anymore, being taught in our schools. And what I've noticed is that the curriculum has changed about our history. Somebody back there had mentioned something about the evolution of mathematics, and that's cool. I mean, science changes, mathematic ways of teaching changes, but our history doesn't change. That's something that's permanent. I just want to make sure that our children are getting the proper history of our country, because that's something that we need to carry on in this country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Weston, Dr. Weston? Excuse me.
Hi, Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to call back and just mention about one of the agenda items, item seven-point-oh-one, the acceptance of resignations and retirements of professional personnel. One of the retirements or resignations that's mentioned is Mr. Steve Willis, who's our Coordinator of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. I'm really sorry to be seeing Mr. Willis go, as I'm sure many others are. He's done a very good job for us, and I think it's really a shame that he's leaving at a time where I think there's a lot of work that's left to be done in this area. And I just want to express the hope that the board and the administration will prioritize finding a replacement for Mr. Willis as soon as is possible, and just to also wish Mr. Willis well on his, wherever he goes from here. I didn't want to let it just be glossed over as a consent item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, comments from any board members?
I wanted to highlight a few music things. Dr. Russell had highlighted some of the other stuff. I was at post-prom on Saturday night. I only made it till three-thirty, so I give so much credit to all of you who stayed the entire time. But there's been a lot going on with our music department in the last couple of weeks, so I wanted to give a shout-out to some of that. I got to travel with the PV Indoor Percussion Ensemble to Dayton a little over a week ago for the WGI Championships, and I want to congratulate the twenty-one students who had an excellent performance there. This past Wednesday was the High School Concert Band, Jazz Band, and Wind Ensemble Concert, amazing concert. It's on, I believe it's on YouTube if you didn't get a chance to be there. The Jazz Band traveled to the Reading Phillies on Thursday and did a pre-game concert. The PV Color Guard placed first in their TIA Region Three Championships this past Saturday, and the eight students are heading to Wildwood for the TIA Atlantic Coast Championships from Thursday to Sunday of this week. And tomorrow night is the Orchestra and Symphony Concert at Middle School East, if anyone's able to come out, and next week is the Choir Concert. So we just have such an amazing music program, so I hope everyone's able to get out to see those. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Campley?
So, I just wanted to kind of bring attention again to where the focus, I really feel, our district needs to go as far as supporting students. It's unfortunate that there has been a lot of push for extreme political agendas and things that are being pushed by organizations such as Moms for Liberty and members of those organizations, and the adoption, or the attempt of the adoption, of a policy that came from another school district that is actually under millions of dollars of litigation, and I would hate to see our monies being diverted to litigation because we are focused on political things and not on the needs of our actual district. It is very concerning when we think of those things and that our focus is there, but as Ms. White said earlier, it'd be really nice to be able to spend a policy committee and really focus on something such as school police officers, which is something that is directly impacting the students. It's not politically pushed or motivated, it's not some group or organization trying to bring their belief systems and press it upon a community. It's also important to think of the fact that we have a drug issue here. There's vaping in particular that we need to focus on. There is the issue of bullying that we hear week after week after week, and yet we're spending all of our time arguing about agendas that don't pertain to Perkuan Valley. And when I think about Mr. Willis leaving and how we keep saying we want to have diversity, we want a diverse staff, well, when we are losing our diverse staff and we're thinking about a climate that really feels like we're not open and inclusive, it's going to be really hard to attract diversity. And thinking about teachers in general and the disrespect that is going to education in general, it's really disturbing when you think about the fact that in Pennsylvania only four thousand or so certificates were issued this year to certify teachers, and that's down from years where we averaged sixteen thousand. And when we think that four thousand teachers were certified to become teachers and six thousand emergency certificates were issued, we had more issuances of emergency certs than we did of actual certifications. And if you don't think this is an issue, you need to think again, because if we can't attract teachers, teachers are what makes our community of learners exceptional. It's why people move to Perkuan Valley. And if we do not have exceptional teachers, and we're not attracting them, and we don't have diversity, people are going to move away in droves, and our housing market is going to plummet. So you need to start thinking about where your priorities are and focusing it on students and the issues that affect Perkuan Valley students, and how we can create a united front that's going to attract people and not detract them. I don't want to see another resignation of somebody who's exceptional, and I don't know why that person is leaving. That's their personal decision. But I don't want to see us losing people, because guess what? We're not going to be gaining people. We don't, there's not a pool of people out there. We're in a really bad situation in education all around. And guess what? When you are looking for people and they hear of what is going on here, they're not going to apply. So I think the focus needs to get back on students, it needs to focus on the actual real issues, and there needs to be a change.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, if, not like if I'm allowed, but it's...
You're certainly allowed.
I don't give a plug for anything. We all got this, so I'm sort of got cheat sheets tonight, but I did want to mention too, because I go to these meetings, I've been on the PVSLA volunteering for them for about ten years. I mean, time flies, you know, when you're having fun. But the PVSLA hands out interest-free loans to PV graduates throughout college and sometimes through graduate school, and they're repaid by the students, so it's a constant pool. And most of the money, I would say, just so people understand who've never heard of it, was given probably by teachers from PV. I would say that the bulk of the money. And sometimes a teacher will, you know, put a good amount of money in, really believing in their students and the future of all of PV. But the association was founded in nineteen fifty-four by Bob and Jane Cope, and they lived in an old farmhouse up near where Kim lives, not that anybody needs to know where Kim lives. But, and the reason why I started off and wanted to bring it up was because I was at the last meeting and we talked about it, and wanted to mention that Jane Doms has been serving on the board for over fifty years this year, and we're giving an extra thousand-dollar scholarship in her honor just this year in her memory. It's not in her memory, I mean, she's still with us, but it's in her honor, that's what I mean. And these people don't get enough honor. These are like, basically, these are full-time jobs that these people work, giving out this money and collecting it and ensuring that it gets to the right colleges and that all the transcripts are submitted and the applications are reviewed. I mean, the applications have essays, and it's a lot of work that these people put into it, and they never ask for anything. And I just wanted everybody to be reminded that this is going on and that it's a 501(c)(3) right here, another 501(c)(3) right here under our noses that's helping PV students, and also that you can donate money if you feel so inclined, but they're almost, they don't even want to ask. But I'm going to give some money to them this year, and I hope that everybody listening to me considers it and thanks them if they happen to know anybody on that board.
Anyone else? Let me just end with, between PVSLA, PV PowerPax, the PV Foundation, you know, your work on PVSLA, I know Ms. Evans-Brockett runs PowerPax, Dr. Kohler, correct, you're active in the Foundation as well and PowerPax, Ms. White with PowerPax as too. A lot of roles on this board that do tremendous work all throughout our community. This is a phenomenal community for anyone who wants to move in or teach at. I just want to thank the finance team, the curriculum team for putting together a great presentation, and unless you have anything to add? You do not?
I thank them as well.
Thank them again. Ten-point-oh-three is a notice of video recording, and this meeting is adjourned.